The League of Women Voters of Ventura County Candidates Forum for candidates running for the Ojai Unified School District Board. My name is Suzanne Harvey and I am a member of the League of Women Voters and I will be moderating the session this evening. Just to allay any concerns anyone might have, the League of Women Voters never supports candidates or parties. Before we get started, I do want to request that people with their cellphones, if you would turn them off, or silent, or make them quiver in your pockets, we would really appreciate it. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce Pat Essick, who is co-president of the Ventura County League, and then I will go through the choreography of the evening and we will get started with candidates' statements, questions, and then closing remarks. So, Pat?
I want to thank you all for coming. Before I tell you a little bit about the League, I'd like you to please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for being here. I'm with the League of Women Voters, which is an organization that was founded by suffragettes after the Nineteenth Amendment was finally passed, giving women the right to vote. We take it very seriously. The organization is no longer just for men, not just for women, it's men and women now, sixteen and up. We would love to have you consider joining us. Our mission is to educate and inform and to advocate for things that we've studied and decided need to happen. It's a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. As Suzanne mentioned, we do not support candidates and we do not support parties. We remain neutral. And this evening, we are pleased to hold this candidate forum as an opportunity for people to get to know the people running for office, so that you can be informed and have the best government possible. We invite all of you to join us, and at the back of the room, we have some pros and cons if you're as confused as many of us are about the seventeen propositions on the ballot. There's some really good research that's gone into that, it simplifies it somewhat, and it gives you suggestions about places to look for more information if that doesn't do it for you. In keeping with the League's mission, we are pleased to hold this candidate's forum, and we thank you for coming. We thank the city for helping us by providing this wonderful location. And now I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne, who's going to moderate for the candidate forum for the school board. Thank you.
All of you were given opportunities, index cards and pencils, to write questions down that you'd like to have submitted to the candidates. Please feel free to submit multiple questions. We only ask two things, one, that you use your best third-grade penmanship, and two, that each card have a single question on it. Feel free to submit questions during the course of the forum, just raise your hand, and one of the volunteers will circulate around the room and come and get your card. We are going to take the questions that you submit, we will bulk them up by subject matter and try to get to as many of your questions as we possibly can, given the time allotted. Each candidate will be given one minute to make an opening statement, one minute to make a closing statement, and one minute to answer each question. Each question will be submitted to each of the candidates. And now we will begin with the candidates' opening statements. We had a random draw, lots of fun, semi-gambling, and Thane Whipple got the premier position, so he will begin with his opening statement. It looks like Jeffrey Kettleson had something else that he needed to do. So, Thane.
Fantastic. It's great to be here with you. Yesterday, I had a really unique opportunity to spend about an hour talking with Hillary Clinton about various issues, and especially education. And as soon as I told her I was on a school board, she said, "Wow, that is harder than being President of the United States." And to be bipartisan, four years ago, when you elected me to the school board, I have a good friend who was a close advisor to Gerald Ford and Ronald Reagan, and he had very similar comments. So why do experienced politicians think it's so hard? Well, the most precious thing that we have in our lives are our children and grandchildren. We care about them, and school board members directly impact their lives. And I hope that I have provided a good example for that over the last five years, and hope to be able to do that into the future, and we'll talk more about the specific issues. Thank you.
Mr. Ulrich?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is William Ulrich. I respectfully ask for your vote, your support and your endorsement for the following reasons. I've lived in Ojai for thirty-six years and raised my family here. I'm the parent of three sons who attended Ojai Unified School District schools. This is in part my motivation for contributing, for giving back to the Ojai community. I have some thoughts regarding Measure J and some practical elements of our facilities, our school, so I think at this point, I will simply say that I have a skill set that is unique among my three colleagues and opponents, and I would like to have the opportunity presenting it to the community and the school district. Thank you.
Lovely. Shelley?
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. As a third-generation Ojai resident, I now have the privilege of raising my four children in this valley. With a student at Nordoff, Matilahaw and Topatopa, I have spent countless hours volunteering. I have also spent the last ten-plus years as a member of the Friends of the Library advocating for literacy programs for children and families. The strong relationship I have with our schools enables me to see what is working well and where we can improve. It sounds like I'm yelling, oh, I'm not yelling enough, sorry. I put great value on all aspects of education and admire our teachers who dedicate themselves to our community. My goal as a school board member is to ensure a supportive environment for teachers and students. We need forward-thinking creative ideas, which come through collaborative communication, to maintain and increase enrollment. As a school board member who is involved in so many parts of our district, I will bring these voices to the board in order to create positive changes in our district. Thank you.
I forgot to mention, there's the timekeeper, and he's very strict.
He is.
And, okay, first question, and this will go to you, Bill. I hope Bill's all right.
That's fine.
What differentiates you from the other candidates who are seeking this office?
I have a thirty-five-year career in the construction and rehabilitation of schools, facilities from K-12 through higher education, the University of California, at three campuses. Given the challenges that are related to our school facilities, the Measure J bond money, and our property taxes, I feel that I'm the best candidate to address that portion of the challenges of the school district. Thank you.
Lovely. And Shelley, the same question to you. What distinguishes you from the other candidates seeking the office?
As a parent of children in the district, I have a very vested interest in how our district is run. I think being so involved in both our all, elementary, junior high and high school, gives me an understanding of where our kids are every day, how our decisions impact the classrooms. In talking with teachers, I get a very intimate view of how they're feeling about our district, whether they're feeling, sorry, whether they're feeling supported by us, how we can better support them, understanding what our kids and families are going through. Are there kids who are sitting waiting for our school buses because they're being bussed up to Summit and it's causing a hardship? It's very difficult, if you're not thoroughly involved in the schools, to understand a lot of these issues, and so that's my unique skill set.
And Thane, the same question to you. What differentiates you from the other candidates running for the board?
Sure. Before I joined the school board, I would say that the primary differentiator factor is that I spent years working in investment banking with public finance, funding schools, public works in the state of California. But on the school board, I think the differentiator is proven service and leadership. We've been able to give teachers raises for the first time in over a decade, we've been able to end the furlough days, we've been more transparent by televising and recording our board meetings. I feel like I've played an important role in all of those, as well as making sure that we preserve what we have, not only for now, but future generations to come.
Lovely. And Shelley, next question is, what will be your top priority if you're elected?
One of my big priorities is a living wage for our teachers. I know that our teachers are not being paid in comparison to other teachers in our county. We're at the bottom of the barrel. The reason for that being one of my top priorities is we also have a large group of teachers who are looking at retirement. With housing prices in our valley, it's going to be crucial that we're able to recruit good teachers into our valley. Part of the distinction of this school district is that so many of our teachers are our community members. They're not just teachers, they're also your AYSO coach, they're also your next-door neighbor, your best friend's mom, and if we can't recruit teachers who will join our community, we will lose that uniqueness that our district offers.
Lovely. And Thane, the same question goes to you. What will be your top priority if elected?
Sure. I heard first top priorities, so I'm going to go with the yes. I think teacher salaries are definitely on there. I think we're going to have to come together as a community to figure out how we can do a better job with that. Reducing class size is important, too. I think those have to go hand in hand, and we have to be able to deliver the best education possible. We recently passed Measure J. We need to successfully allocate those funds and be good stewards. We formed Citizens Oversight Committee, which has been fantastic. Great architects, great public works people. I'm sorry, Bill hasn't been on the Oversight Committee, it would have been great to get his input earlier, but I think that's going to be important. We have a lot of other important things going on, but those I would put at the top.
Lovely. And Bill, same question. What will be your top priority if you're elected?
As Thane referenced, the Measure J bond funds, at this point, are a community asset. The Measure S bond that was passed in 1997 totaled thirty million dollars, yet we still have leaking roofs. The manner in which the bond monies are spent must not be squandered and must not be dissipated in ways that are anything less than absolutely effective. Thank you.
Thane, this question goes to you. Do you have any ideas of ways the school district could cooperate to provide more services for students and families? For example, open campuses for after-school play on school grounds, et cetera?
Absolutely. I think, in fact, we had some discussions with the city early on about doing more to have the Parks and Rec work with the schools. I think there are already some activities. We do some sports that are combined, but I think that there's a lot more we can do. You know, another thing that I think we have an opportunity to do with Measure J money is to bring community funds, school funds, private funds together to fund reincarnation of our swimming pool at Nordoff, so that it's actually a pool where kids can learn to compete and actually play water polo without being on their knees. I think that there's a lot that we can do, and I think it would be a tremendous community asset. So I think working with the city, the Rec Department and private groups, there's a lot that we could do in that regard.
Great. Bill, same question. Do you have ideas on ways the school district could cooperate to provide more services for students and families?
I'm absolutely in agreement with Thane regarding the pool. That will take, I believe, a concerted effort between the city and the school district, relative to perhaps rejuvenation of past programs. At one time, I think the Rotary had a string program out at Miners Oaks, that there were at least forty string players there. That has kind of fallen by the wayside, that would be great if that came back. And as it is right now, a continued effort to work synergistically with the city, who is, the Parks Department is conducting an after-school program at two campuses.
Shelley, same question?
Can you repeat?
I surely can. Do you have ideas of ways the school district could cooperate to provide more services for students and families?
I like the ideas that I've heard. I think our district is moving in the right direction on this topic. I know in past years, it has been very difficult. I heard from parents that, for example, they wanted a Girl Scout troop to meet on campus, and we're being told that it was too difficult, that we couldn't do that. And I'm thrilled to see that we're opening this, our campuses up, they really are meant to be community centers. I think, considering the drought that we're in, I would love to see our community come together to have green spaces on our school campuses that we can't have in our own yards anymore. It's just unfeasible to have these green spaces. That we could, as a community, come together and say, "This space is for all of us in the community." I think bringing other people, for example, oh, sorry, I'm out of time.
You're out of time. Okay. Bill, this question goes to you, it's a little long. Fast forward three years, enrollment has not increased, and the teachers' union is adamant about not taking a pay cut. The budget shows a second year of deficits, and the solvency of the Ojai Unified School District is being questioned by the state and county offices of education. What do you say to parents that believed their children were well cared for in Ojai Public Schools?
I believe it's a fact that the student population has decreased consistently for the last twenty-two years, and that trend is projected to continue. The decisions that need to be made by the school board and the administration in the intervening three years that you reference will be very difficult ones and may be intolerable to some elements in the school community, but they will need to be made relative to what is done in response to the declining school population, which is apparently inevitable. Thank you.
Shelley, the same question. I'll read it again, it is a little long.
Thank you.
Fast forward three years, enrollment has not increased, and the teachers' union is adamant about not taking a pay cut. The budget shows a second year of deficits, and the solvency of the Ojai Unified School District is being questioned by the state and county offices of education. What do you say to parents that believed that their children were well cared for in Ojai Public Schools?
What would I say to those parents? I happen to be one of those parents, so to me, it would be unconscionable to allow ourselves to get to that point, that the state would come in and take over the district. There are many creative solutions and ideas out there that I think warrant looking at. I've heard from parents that they would like to see perhaps magnet schools that would create a reason for people to come into our district. I know that when the Ventura District was losing a lot of its Oak View students to Ojai District, they asked the parents in the Oak View community what they were looking for and what would draw them back to their district, and then they implemented those ideas. That is something we need to do in our valley. We need to find out what the parents are looking for in their schools of choice.
Great. Let's see. Next question, and we start with Shelley. It doesn't seem right, does it?
I think you missed Thane.
I have an answer.
Oh, excuse me, Thane.
If you want to give me a different question.
No, no, you're the bookend. You're the bookend. You're the stalwart. Yes.
Well, I would just say to that, welcome to our life. You know, I think the last couple of years, we've seen a little bit more money, but I know Ricky Horn is here in the building and has faced exactly these issues for many years, right? It's been a challenge. What we have tried to do recently is tried to be very transparent and bring the community into the discussion, because in order to get community support and to let parents know what's going on, there shouldn't be surprises. We need to communicate, we need to be effective at communicating, and then we need to have a conversation about what do we do next. The teacher shouldn't be paid less. The way the school districts work, I'm going to try to get it here in the thirty seconds, is if you have a lot of poor kids, you get more money. If you're in a wealthy area, you've got property owners that are willing to pay parcel taxes to fund education. Some of us are in the middle, and we really get the squeeze. So I think we need to either look to the community, well, in fact, I think we do need to look to the community to support our schools more, and avoid that kind of dire situation that we would otherwise face.
Shelley, this question goes to you first. Beyond utilizing bond funds wisely, what are your top objectives?
Well, I think I spoke to that earlier with the teacher salaries, but I'll tell you a few other things. One of the things that I would really like the district to look at, and I brought it up to Dr. Bangster recently, is our school start times. The CDC shows that when children start before eight-thirty in the morning, it actually is problematic to their health, their education, and we could do, I would like to look at what the reasons are for starting our kids at seven-thirty in the morning, it seems pretty early. I would like to look at some of the busing issues. I know that we have some routes that aren't being properly serviced, and I understand that we're having difficulties in recruiting bus drivers. But we have kids who are spending a good hour waiting for or on the bus to get home.
Okay. And Thane, the same question. Beyond using bond funds wisely, what are your top objectives?
Sure. I'll take a different topic now than I have on the priorities and focus on technology. When I was president of the Ojai Education Foundation for a number of years before joining the board, we started funding technology initiatives in the schools. It was small money at the time, it's grown a lot, thank you to the OEF supporters, but I think there's so much that we can do to enhance education with technology, to look at bringing in more online learning, and to really make a difference. The whole world is technologically advanced. I think in the schools, in order to prepare our children for the future, it will be important that we do even more. Now, we are doing great. We've got tablets, we've got Chromebooks, we've got a lot going on, we've got smartboards, we're doing great things, but there's a lot more we need to do. And I think that focusing there also, volunteers, I think reaching out to the community for volunteers is something we can really do and make use of.
Great. Bill, same question. Beyond utilizing bond funds wisely, what are your top objectives?
I attended the Ojai Educational Foundation breakfast a couple of weeks ago as well, and I was really impressed with how much the community supports our schools and how that forum is used to recognize people who have given so much, have brought so much to the school community. From my perspective, I think we must repurpose. We must make our schools perform as magnets to attract and keep the children and the parents within their neighborhood school, rather than crossing the Ojai Valley. And in addition, I must say that we must think creatively about using the district's assets in ways that historically we have not.
Good. Next question, Thane begins with you. What are the district's plans for our special education students?
Great. I think that's a terrific question. You know, we can always do more, but we have a great program, and in fact, I think families have come to our valley just because of our great program. We need to get more funding. It's interesting, yesterday, I brought this up to Secretary Clinton, she has a high interest in special education, and she was very concerned that we're not getting the funding that we should be getting. The federal government is supposed to be funding forty percent, they think they're funding seventeen percent, we're actually probably getting about ten percent, and she made a commitment to me that she's going to make an effort to get us more of that money. So a little lobbying at the state and federal level, I think, will help, but making the system better. We need to take care of these kids, it's hard to do.
Thank you.
He was just getting ready.
He was resting, it's a limp wrist.
We need to take care of every child in our valley. I think special education is really important, and a smart, and I've ended this a lot of times, but there's no end to what we can do for special education.
There's a term for what just happened to you, but I won't use it. Okay, Bill, the same question goes to you. What are the district's plans for special education students?
At this point, I'm not qualified to comment on that, so I'm not going to take this opportunity to go further. Thank you.
All right. Shelley, same question. What are the district's plans for special education students?
I have very limited knowledge about our special education in the district. My experience has been that, gosh, almost twenty years ago, I worked as a teacher's aide at Nordoff in the resource classrooms, and I have an aunt who still, to this day, works at Nordoff in the resource classrooms. So I hear a lot about special ed. The truth is, though, that I would need to do a lot of digging and ask a lot of questions on this topic, because I don't know how we're doing. I don't know from the families of special ed students how our district is doing for those students, and where we can improve and what they would like to see. So my answer is that I would do a lot of questioning and make sure that we are on track with those families.
Great. Bill, the next question begins with you. What does building some school buildings have to do with guiding teachers and policies in schools?
At the risk of sounding like a single-issue candidate, and as I related before, we've already gone through a Measure S in 1997, and we still have roofs that leak. We are looking at the district's student population having decreased to thirty-five percent since 1994, and the average age of our school facilities is sixty-four years old. Our students and teachers need and deserve modern, functional and safe school facilities. This is about the integrity of the school community. As such, the use and the avoidance of waste in the Measure J facilities' repair funds is paramount. We are looking at spending thirty percent of that thirty-five million dollars on consultants, and administration, and supervision, and that's frankly unacceptable.
Okay. Shelley, the same question. What does building some school buildings have to do with guiding teachers and policies in schools?
Well, my answer to that question is that our, if I understand the question correctly, building some school buildings, our kids are, right now, are in some dilapidated buildings. We have an issue with that, and when teachers are forced to teach in buildings where the roofs are leaking on their computers, we have serious issues. I'm very grateful to the community that Measure J passed, that we can now look forward to fixing these problems, because creating a safe environment for our kids to be in is of utmost importance. Giving the teachers a beautiful place to work, I don't know if you guys have been in the portables lately, but... in the portables lately, but we can do better. And I'm thrilled that our community sees fit that we can do that.
Terrific. And the next question starts with you, Shelley.
Can I answer that?
Oh, God, Fane.
It's fine. It's fine.
I have a little system here, and it's not working for me.
I enjoy just being here, so it's really, it's really not a problem. Bill, that's fine. You know, we need good facilities for our children, and that's why we advocated Measure J, and we are grateful, as Shelley mentioned, for the community supporting that. As I also mentioned, we've had a committee working for over the last year in making sure we allocate those funds correctly. I'm really actually offended by the idea that we might squander that money. I don't think that's helpful for the discussion because we have so many professionals working on it. And if you want to contribute to that, that's great. We spent the last year and a half looking at whether, what we should do with all of our school campuses, how important they were all to our community. And I think we made the right decision in keeping them. But I think we have some options now on which buildings we'll use at each campus. And I want to make sure that we do have good facilities for our students. As mentioned, I will agree about the rain issue, but I will stop for now. Thank you.
Okay. Shelley, this question goes to you. What connections, for example, volunteerism or volunteering, have you had with the Ojai schools?
Gosh, I have been a volunteer in the classroom. I've helped kids with their math skills, with reading. I have gone on field trips, been part of the PTA. I currently sit on the Topa Topa School Site Council. I have been involved in the PTA at Matilahaw, at Nordoff. Last Friday night, I was in the snack bar booth at the football game. I hope to see you guys all out there, supporting our Rangers. The list of things that I've done at the schools, I think I could go on and on. I've also been involved in the Friends of the Library, which, in my estimation, is integral to our schools as well. They offer homework assistance to kids, computers that they can use after school for their homework when they need those computers for their schoolwork that they may not have at home. So I have been involved in volunteering my time for the education of our valley for a long time.
Okay. Fane, what connections volunteering have you had or done with the Ojai schools?
Wonderful. Our four children went through the school district. As a parent, I tried to help where I could. I remember one time in particular, I felt like the water polo team wasn't getting enough practices. I don't know if they were happy about it, but I volunteered as an assistant coach and did the early morning practices. I joined the Ojai Education Foundation Board, served as president for many years. We took that from raising about $10,000 a year up into closer to $100,000 a year. And now it's just really taken off. I love to see what they've done without me. But I feel like I have served as much as I could have in the valley with the schools.
Terrific. And Bill, same question. What connections or volunteering have you done with the Ojai schools?
I have done no volunteer connection with the school district. At this point, I'm, my approach is coming from the outside of the community, as far as the school community is concerned, with a different set of eyes and a different approach because I believe that in order to administer, in addition to Measure J bond funds, but the interest, the overall interest of the school district at times, it is prudent to have an outside set of eyes and outside set of experience and skills with which to bring to these intractable issues that have been presenting to our school district for 30 years. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Fane, let's see. How are you going to raise enrollment? What are you going to do to make the youth want to attend Ojai District Schools? Because overall, in most circumstances, it is the children's choice.
Great. Important question. About 30 years ago, we had twice as many students. No, 30 years ago, we had about the same amount. We went up to double. Now we're back down again. A lot of it's demographics. There's a lot that you can't fix about demographics. But what do we do? The one thing we do is we have great schools, and a lot of kids from other school districts come to our schools. They love it here. And the better our schools are, the more students will come theoretically, the Field of Dreams concept. I think technology helps us as well. If we're able to provide more online learning, we'll be able to reach out to additional students who would otherwise not attend our schools. I think those are two of the biggest areas. But having excellent schools is the best thing we can do, and letting people know about, the Miners Oaks has done a fantastic job letting people know about their school. All the other schools could do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, how are you going to raise enrollment? What are you going to do to make youth, young people, want to attend our district schools? Because overall, in most circumstances, it is the children's choice.
We do need to have at each campus a magnet or magnet program that will keep and attract students that are from the neighborhood as well as their parents in concert. I would submit that, since this was a recommendation of the 7-Eleven Committee, that the Ojai School District needs a grant writer or a staff member assigned to pursue alternative sources of funding for tech, for arts, and related modern programs. Thank you.
Shelley, same question. How are you going to raise enrollment? What are you going to do to make the young people in the community want to attend our district schools?
I heard in that that our kids often make the choices, and I'm not so sure I agree with that. I think parents really make these choices. And I think our job as school board members is to let them know, let parents know, what our school district has to offer. I agree that we can look at the magnet option. I'm not sure if that will solve the problem, but I would love to explore that idea. But communicating with parents as to what we do offer, the fact that we have web design classes and graphic arts classes and auto tech and welding, as well as our AP classes, I don't know if parents understand all the amazing things that our schools do offer. As Fane said, Miners Oaks has put together a brochure showing the things that they're doing on their campus. And I have to say, as involved as I am, I learned a lot. I was surprised. They have a great environmental program at their school.
Okay. The next question goes to you, Bill. Measure S, do you know what percent breakdown of, what the percent breakdown was for spending? And if so, how much went to officials? So it's kind of a budget question.
That is, I don't have the specific information relative to how went, and I'm not sure what is referred to as officials. I do know that there was a $15 million bond issued, and that the state of California matched it with another $15 million. So we had $30 million to work with. And it appears that we have still, we actually cannot, at this point, go forward with spending Measure J monies until, at one time, there were 31 permits that were still outstanding from Measure S dating back to, well, actually before Measure S, 1988. And as such, somehow, the $30 million was spent, and we still have leaky roofs.
Okay. And the same question to you, Shelley. Measure S, do you know what percent breakdown is for spending, and do you happen to know how much of it went to officials?
I honestly do not know how much went to officials. I don't know the breakdown of Measure S. I know where I could find the information, but at this time, I don't, I don't have that information.
Okay. And Fane, same question.
Well, the simple answer is all of the money went to facilities, and none of the money went to the school board or administration. Again, that, they, it's kind of ancient history, so I don't have all the breakdowns fresh in my mind. But I think the school board that was in place at the time did their best with those funds, as we will do our best with the Measure J funds.
Okay. And the next question begins with you, Shelley. What is your opinion on Ojai District programs for homeschoolers called Valley Oak?
I know a little bit about Valley Oak Charter School. I have a good friend who teaches for that school, and I have very good feelings about that school. I think it's important for our district to offer many choices because we, not all people fit in a traditional classroom, and this gives options to families. And I'm grateful that we have Valley Oak Charter in our valley to give us some options. So, yeah.
Fane, same question. What is your opinion on Ojai District programs for homeschoolers called Valley Oak?
Right. So Valley Oak operates as a private charter under the Ojai Unified School District. It is private, but we supervise and review their audit and have an annual meeting with them. I think they've done great work. I think there's a lot, as I mentioned before, with technology that we can do for homeschoolers beyond what Valley Oak Charter does that will bring state-funding money into the Ojai Unified School District rather than divert it to private groups. But I am for any, anything that helps our children and our students, so.
Okay. And Bill, same question. What is your opinion of the Ojai District program for homeschoolers called Valley Oak?
Charter school within a school district are an essential part of the vibrancy of that, of the school initiative, and address the issues of particular students and their families that can't fit into or prefer not to fit into the conventional school environment. Our school dollars support the charter school, and there are other charter schools that I'm aware of that may be coming into existence depending upon the facilities. So at this point, I think that's an essential element, and I believe that we should go forward in supporting them as part of our school community.
Okay. And the last question, Fane, begins with you. What motivated you to run for this office?
I had four children who went to the schools here. I was really impressed by the education they got. We have great teachers. We have had great staff and administrators. And I wanted to do everything I could to support that. Steve Fields resigned five years ago. The school district was looking for someone to take his place, and I put my name in and was very happy that I've been able to serve the schools and our community. I think we have one of the most special places on earth, and I want to preserve that for future generations.
Bill, same question. What motivated you to run for this office?
In 1994, when I had two students out at San Antonio, two sons, the superintendent at the time, Gwen Gross, approached me, because she was aware of my background in public works, construction management. And she asked if I could, would be interested in helping the school district with their facilities issues. And I said, "Do you have any money?" And she said, "No, we don't, at least not yet. They, at that time, were considering the Measure S money." I said, "Well, get back with me when you do," and I'd be pleased as punch to help in any way possible. So she was instrumental, I think, in getting Measure S together. She, of course, departed to the Beverly Hills School District. So at this point, I'm at the tail end of a lengthy public works, construction management career, and I'm looking at a particular capacity, particular skill set, and particular experience that I think is essential to the district and its challenges of the moment.
Thank you. And Shelley, same question. What motivated you to run for this office?
Two years ago, there were three seats available on the school board, and one of the teachers at Topa Topa approached me and said, "You know, you really should consider doing this." And quite frankly, I thought she was crazy. But I thought I would explore it further. And in doing that, I decided to join the committee that looked at moving the sixth grade up to Matilahaw because I wanted to find out how the school district really ran. I wanted to make sure that if I was going to put myself out into the school board that way, that we really had a voice and were heard. And I found out that we do, that when committees are formed in this valley, those voices are heard and we are listened to. And I was pleased by that. So I decided to run two years ago. I didn't make it, and I am back to serve this community this time around.
Terrific. Now, we have time for your final statements. Each one of you will have one minute. And Shelley, we will begin with you.
I'd like to say thank you to all of you here tonight. Our district is very, very fortunate to have such dedicated and active supporters. Strong schools create strong communities, and strong communities create strong schools, and that's absolutely evident in our valley. There are so many issues that a school board addresses, and the best results come from truly being involved and understanding the impacts that those decisions have on students, families, and teachers. I'm ready to put my years of experience to work for our district. I will diligently ask questions, listen to the needs of our students and teachers, and look for the creative solutions that will strengthen our education system. I thank you for your support, and I ask for your vote.
Fane?
One more Hillary Clinton story. So yesterday, she asked what school district I was from, and I told her, "Ojai Unified School District, Ojai is right." And she interrupted me, and she said, "Ojai? I love Ojai! I love Ojai, too. In fact, I love Ojai more than she does, I bet." And I really want the best for our children and for our future. I think that, well, I hope that over the last five years, I have served you well. I feel like I have. I hope I haven't disappointed you, and I think that we have a lot more to do. And I think in the next few years, we'll be critical in making some important decisions and taking some important actions that will make our schools even better than they are today. I'm grateful for all of your support, and I would ask that you would help me continue my work on the board. Thank you.
Great. And Bill?
I concur with my fellow candidates about what a wonderful community Ojai is, as well as in support of everything that goes on here, and that it is a unique place and that this is a unique opportunity to pursue. But I'm, in closing, I want to ask again for your vote, your support, and your endorsement for the following reasons. I believe I can present to the school board a plan for the district going forward that is creative, hopeful, and above all, realistic. I would bring practical experience and expertise in the vetting, review, and management of large facilities, projects, and budgets to the Ojai USD board that matches the challenges and opportunities that are presently facing the district. Thank you.
Wonderful. There was just one question we didn't have time to ask. I'll just read it so that you know kind of what's on the minds of other people. If Ojai is to remain a small town, as some people hope, why do you think people believe it's important to increase school enrollment, since that will increase the population, the traffic, and put more, right, demands on local resources? So that completes the evening's forum, the questions and answers. We'd like to thank the candidates, the City of Ojai, the Boyd Center, and all of you for... for coming. Before you leave, we left some very jazzy-looking evaluation forms in your seats. If we could prevail upon you to take a minute and fill them in, we really do use that information, so that would be very helpful. And we have information about the League at the back of the room. I would encourage you to pick it up. It's a fantastic organization. Thank you.